Order as a reminder, please note the board meetings are being recorded for the convenience of those unable to attend this video conference. A recording and closed captioning will be posted to the BURs YouTube channel following the meeting. Alex, can you please call roll?
Certainly. Larian Angelo.
Present.
Thank you. Isaac Carminiani. Janil Chacon.
Present.
Thank you. April Chapman.
Present.
Thank you. Deborah Dillingham. Natalie Green Giles. Thank you. Eric Henry. Michael Kraft.
Present.
Thank you. Vanessa Leong. Gary Lennon.
Present.
John Maderick.
Present.
Donald Nesbit. Lindsay Oates.
Present.
Thank you. Kathy Park Price. Laurie Put Vasker. Thomas Shepherd.
Present.
Thank you. Shannon Wade.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a call room. Just a note for everybody, if you're not speaking, can you please mute yourself? Thank you. The first order of business is calendar item number one, noting the minutes of the meeting of the Board of Retirement held on January 26, 2021. The minutes have been previously provided to the board via email and on the SharePoint site. May I have a motion to consider the minutes from the January 26th Board meeting? Michael in a second.
Motion, uh, second.
Second from Mr. Henry.
Uh, no, Tom Shepherd.
Oh, Tom Shepherd, I'm sorry. Thank you, Tom. As usual, we are going to do voice votes. When I call out all in favor, if you wish to vote in favor of the resolution, please unmute yourself and respond in favor. Similarly, if you wish to oppose or abstain from a particular vote, please unmute yourself and respond accordingly. When I called out any opposed or any abstentions, all in favor of approving the minutes for the January 26th Board meeting, please indicate your approval.
In favor.
Approved.
Favor.
Favor. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Janil abstained.
Yeah, I wasn't there. I'm abstaining.
Uh, who was that?
It's Larian and April.
Okay, thank you. Okay, motion carries. Next item on this evening's agenda is calendar items two through 17, the ordinary business of BURs. May I have a motion to consider calendar items two through 17?
Consider.
Natalie.
Natalie in a second.
Tom.
Tom, as a second. Alex, can you please tell us about the ordinary business of BURs?
Certainly. These are all the retirements, refunds, and death benefits that BURs has processed since the last meeting of this board.
Okay, thank you, Alex. We will now vote on these items. All in favor of approving calendar items two through 17, please indicate your approval.
In favor.
In favor.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the Executive Director's update. Sandy, would you like to share any remarks with us?
Yes, thank you very much, John. First, I'd like to acknowledge that 1980 Olympic hockey victory, the Miracle on Ice, occurred on this day in 1980. Having five kids who went through hockey camp was one of my favorite things to do. Just recognition of the Miracle on Ice. I'd like to welcome Larian Angelo to the board. Larian, welcome. We look forward to having your input into all issues in the retirement system. A little notice for folks, tomorrow is the National Association of Securities Professionals Wall Street Hall of Fame virtual event. It includes a recognition and honor for Jean Daniel Desmornes. Remember that we lost JD to the COVID-19 pandemic. JD was a champion of the NASP-sponsored training program Fast Track, which BURs continues to support. Anyone who'd like information about attending this event who does not have it, just reach out to Karen or me and you can attend. Tonight, lots happening. Lydia Amin, our Deputy Director and Learning Development Head at BURs, will be presenting a proposal to acquire software in support of our Leadership Staff Development Program. This is an important foundation to a program that will support our leadership team and staff as they work to better the lives and finances of our members. Uh, Yekese Aday is a Philly, the Director of our Internal Audit Program, will be asking for an extension of our existing Baker Tilly contract. I'd like to remind you that we stood up our internal audit program just before headcount limitations were put on our organization. While this contract extension allows us to continue the use of the third-party contractor, we do expect to present an alternative in the fiscal 2022 budget that provides for BURs to have its own internal audit hires, which in our view is more optimal. This week, our Human Resources Team distributed a survey to present and former trustees. I hope you saw it in your email. Please respond to the survey. This survey has two functions. It provides feedback to me on my performance and our staff and leadership. More importantly, though, we are pursuing an effort to begin preparation for the new trustee appointments that will come with the new mayoral administration. We intend to develop a package of materials and an onboarding program for incoming trustees, and we are looking to you to help identify the needs and best approaches. And we will also be voting tonight to extend the delegation of authority to the New York City Controller's Office that you vote each quarter. This delegation empowers the Bureau of Asset Management in the Controller's Office to execute the day-to-day activities required to implement the resolutions that trustees approve related to our investment program. On Thursday last week, I sent an email to trustees that had attached to it a draft of a letter I proposed to send to Alex Danyay, Chief Investment Officer in the Bureau of Asset Management. This letter identifies some concerns that I and staff have expressed to the Bureau of Asset Management over the last few years and proposes some solutions to these concerns. The plan is to review this letter with BURs Executive Committee in the next few weeks, see comments from all trustees, and ask for a resolution of support from trustees at the March Board of Trustees meeting. Please take time to review this draft letter. It came to you in an email and is also in the package for this board meeting. Finally, tonight, Michael Wright from Siegel Marco will be providing an update on the progress of the fossil fuel divestment program that you approved at our January meeting. We will be asking for a resolution to support the execution of this program tonight. This resolution will empower Siegel Marco to complete the process and also provide for an update in 30 days. And that's it from me, John.
Okay, thank you, Sandy. Anybody have any questions for Sandy? Okay, great.
Just a quick comment on the letter you circulated, Sandy, the BAM letter. Are we, I didn't look through the agenda. Are we going to have a chance to discuss that or?
Well, I wanted you to percolate on it until March discussion at the March meeting, and I'll ask for a resolution in support.
Okay.
And the Executive Committee, I don't know the date. I believe you're meeting before that March meeting, and I expect to have a more robust conversation about it at that meeting.
March 9 is the Executive Committee meeting.
So March 9?
March 9, we'll be talking about the letter at the Executive Committee meeting.
Thank you, Antonio.
Okay, next item on the agenda is calendar item number 18, direction to consultants to effectuate divestment from securities issued by certain fossil fuel reserve owners. May I have a motion to consider?
To consider.
Exactly. And a second.
Second.
Okay, Thomas Shepherd on a second. Thank you. Michael Wright is here from Siegel Marco advises to tell us about this resolution. Michael?
Sure. And I have a couple of generic slides. Okay to share those? Kind of move us through more quickly. I shared some additional comment, and this will be at the, at kind of a policy and philosophy. Remember, the trustees did vote to proceed with the divestment, and what I was directed to do over the past couple of weeks was to be, was to talk to our respective index fund managers to look at the list of approved securities, and then certainly I've kept Bureau of Asset Management, excuse me, up to date on what we were doing. The way that we want to do this, we go to the first slide there. The idea here will be to look at our two largest strategies, the Russell 1000 index strategy, and we would like, as you'll see in the resolution in a minute, we'd like your direction to direct the Bureau of Asset Management to implement this in quarter 2021. But I want to let you know that some of the generic and kind of 10,000-foot view of that, about 14 stocks will go out of the Russell 1000. It's a one and a half percent position. The important part when you go through these transitions are always, are we going to have any fee of impact? And what is kind of the trading cost and tracking error, the variance that we'll have versus our original policy guidelines? And I want you to know that on each of those, as consultant and in discussion with staff, we're very satisfied that our overall management fee for both BlackRock and SSGA as our money managers will not change, that the exposure is small enough that we feel that this can easily be implemented, and our managers have confirmed this can be implemented in the first quarter. And the trading cost and the, and the tracking error, that kind of cost of the ongoing divestment of these securities is within tolerable ranges of risk and return based on the policies that the trustees have already approved. It'll take maybe two to three days to execute this. Remember, we're going to look at this list on an annual basis, but there will be what we'll call optimization, a rebalancing as we go through our regular monitoring and and the manager goes through the regular managing, management process of these securities. So the leave behind on the Russell 1000 is that we, that in our discussions with BlackRock, and they're going to get us a little bit more detail on this in the next couple of days, so we have a full note that we can give you on the, on the the expected trading costs, but it'll be in the, it'll be measurable in the, in the basis points kind of size and dollar impact. The second biggest strategy we have is the next one, the top 200 that is managed by SSGA. There were five stocks in this. 1.8% of the, or about 11.8 million out of the, out of the total portfolio value. And you will have buys and sells, so the total effect will actually be more like $38 million till we both sell the securities, the five securities, and then rebalance to buy into the new securities. But the tracking error will be minuscule at 0.03%. We show what the ultimate weighting will be. Again, no management fee change, and the tracking error versus the benchmark will be in the, in the 30 basis point kind of range expected. So that means that we could expect to earn maybe 30 basis points more or less than the top 200 securities. We believe that's an appropriate and, and tolerable level of risk in exchange for the divestment strategy. And just an update on the two strategies that we'll be talking about in the future. We have a BlackRock 2000 value strategy has under $100 million in that allocated to that. And we have an emerging market strategy that we may, may remember we've discussed before. That's actually transitioning to another manager over time, so that's the easiest one. We're not going to do anything with the emerging market strategy pending our selection of another manager on that. But in the Russell 2000 value strategy, our issue here is that this is not a separate account and not as easily implemented as is the Russell 1000 and the SSGA 200. So we're going to have to work with BAM to segregate out the BURs interest. But again, it's relatively small. There's only four stocks, 0.36% exposure. Not expecting that that'll be more difficult, and my expectation is we'll still get this done within the fiscal year. And I'd say the bottom line of all this is we are moving expeditiously, and with the resolutions that you're going to see next, the goal is, we already have kind of written confirmation from BAM that if we indeed pass these resolutions, they will issue the directives to the managers for us to get it implemented over time, timeline that I've outlined. So any questions? Glad to take them, but I think it's fairly straightforward. Here we are implementing the already approved process from the trustees.
Hi, this is, this is Tom Shepherd. Question, you said that the, the cost associated with divestment is within a tolerable range. Do you have an approximate, like, dollar value of that?
I do. Actually, I'll have a better handle on that coming up, but if you think a 30 basis point kind of track, well, I'd rather not estimate that. I'd rather come back to you with a specific answer on that. We have looked at the management fee impact and the trading cost impact, and as I said on the Russell 200, that that was about $12,000 to implement that. Now, the Russell 1000 is almost $1 billion of assets in that, so it's going to be significantly larger, but I'd rather get you the exact number than just guess here.
I appreciate that.
I was wondering, so what are you assuming the impact on the overall value of the portfolio will be?
Well, the most direct impact is going to be that trading cost. So as my example, in the, in the, in the top 200 portfolio, it'll be about $12,000.
No, but I, yeah, I understand that, but I think what I'm asking is, is there any, any impact we can anticipate for lower returns than would have been otherwise had we left those stocks in?
So I'll, I'll jump in there ahead of you, Mike. Larian, the Controller's Office and Bureau of Asset Management, TRS, and us, I mean, correct me when I'm wrong, Antonio, but we retained an outside consultant to do an analysis of this. We can share with you the detailed analysis that MSCI did. It basically identified a marginal to zero impact. I'm sorry. You're right. You're right, Natalie. Thank you. A marginal to immaterial effect on the expected returns over the long term, and to be honest, a huge error in estimate. The analysis that was provided to us indicated that it was unlikely they were correct in any of their final conclusions because the errors were so great. I would, I would defer to Antonio and Michael for additional comments, but we can supply the detail to you.
So, but the, so the estimate of the impact was not viable because, or useful, because the error estimate was very large?
Yes. It was outside the range of what we expect. It was inside the range of what we expect in terms of normal portfolio volatility anyway. And maybe to drill down a little bit too much information, but you can imagine that as we were looking at this now in a period where commodity and energy stocks have relatively underperformed, it might indeed look like a benefit to sell those energy stocks and not have been in them. Now we're in a period where energy stocks are doing better, and so if I were to make a short-term estimate, I could argue that there will be a performance impact, a negative performance impact by selling. But over the longer period that, that Makita looked at, it got lost in the standard deviation of our $6 billion over fund, total asset fund.
Okay, I mean, if I, if somebody could just send those along to me, because I would just like to have a look. I'm not, I mean, I'm not, I'm not interested in voting against it. It's the right thing to do. But some, you know, you want to make sure when you're doing the right thing, you know what it's going to cost. That's my only question.
We'll get you those reports, Larian.
Sure, that'd be good. Thank you.
John, I would like to note for the record that Trustee Eric Henry has also joined the meeting. Thank you.
Welcome, Eric.
Okay, any other questions for Michael or anybody else? Okay, great. We will now vote on this item. All in favor of calendar item number 18, please indicate your approval.
Approved.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is calendar item 19, election of members of the Disability Committee. May I have a motion to consider?
Michael, so moves.
Michael as a first and a second. Shannon? Thank you, Shannon. This item was tabled at the January Board Meeting. The Disability Committee meets as required to review applications for disability retirement. The committee then makes recommendations regarding these applications to the full Board of Trustees. There are five trustees on the Disability Committee, including the chancellors designate and both employee members. Donald, Lindsay, and I are automatically on the committee as our alternates. We will need two additional volunteers and two alternates. Not all at once, but are there any volunteers?
I volunteer. This is Eric Henry.
Thank you, Eric. It's a fun group.
Is Janil, can I be back on it?
Yes, absolutely. We'd love to have you. All right, so that's, that's two. We have Eric Henry and Janil Chacon, and we need two alternates now? Am I correct, Alex?
Yes, that's right. We'll need an alternate for each.
Okay, so I'm going to pull some teeth. Two more.
Tom, I'll be the alternate for Janil.
Okay, we have Tom Shepherd as an alternate for Janil, and one more. We can sit here all night if you'd like.
We have to offer bribes.
Probably not a good idea. We're recording right now.
I was going to make sure you had me up.
Comedy, comedy.
Sorry, Gary. No, we do not have your name on. Would you like to be an alternate for, for Eric?
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you, Gary. Perfect. We have enough now, correct? All right, let's vote to a point.
Can I ask a question, John, before we do that? Alex, I really want to ask you. So considering some of our experiences with this alternate thing, did you still want to, in fact, do the alternate for a specific person?
Well, that is how the, that is how the procedures of the committee are set up right now. And that, so I think, you know, it is possible to revise it, but that is, that is how this is set up right now.
Okay.
Would you like to volunteer, Shannon? She's muted.
Unmute. I said no, I'm already on a committee. I'm an alternate for a committee, and I show up, so I'm good.
Okay. All right, so let's, let's vote on the appointment of the Disability Committee. Alex, do I need to state everybody on the Disability Committee, or is that already taken care of?
Um, you can just ask to, so just to reiterate, the proposal is for Eric Henry and Janil Chacon to be appointed as committee members, with their alternates being respectively Gary Lennon and Tom Shepherd. So you can ask for a vote on that slate.
Great. Okay, let's vote on that now. All in favor? I am in favor.
True.
Favor. Favor.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, great. We have now formed our Disability Committee for 2021. Next item on the agenda is calendar item number 20, adoption of the Disability Committee's recommendations. May I have a motion to consider? Shannon in a second. Larian?
Yes.
Thank you. Alex, can you please tell us about this item?
Certainly. The Disability Committee of the Board met last week and reviewed nine applications for disability retirement. The committee has referred two applications back to the Medical Board for further review or corrections and is recommending that the Board issue final determinations regarding the other seven applications for disability retirement.
Thank you, Alex. Are there any questions from the Board? Being none, we will now vote on this item. All in favor of calendar item number 20, please indicate your approval. Approved. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is calendar item number 21, authorization to amend an agreement with Baker Tilly, Virchow Kraus, LLP to provide internal audit services to the Board of Education Retirement System. May I have a motion to consider?
Michael moves.
Michael in a second.
Janil, second.
And a Janil, Janil in a second. Aday, can you please tell us about this item?
Sure. Good afternoon, everyone. I hope you can hear me.
Yes.
Yeah, it sounds just fine.
Okay. Due to the headcount constraints, there has been no staff added to the Internal Audit Department in the year and a half since we were established at BURs. Since then, I've been supported by Baker Tilly in the execution of internal audits for the department. For the remainder of fiscal year 2021, there are two audits planned, and for fiscal year 2022, there are a total of seven audits planned. Without additional headcount or support from Baker Tilly, the department does not have the human resources needed to carry out the internal audit plan. The resolution before you today is to request the Board's authorization to amend the current agreement with Baker Tilly to add an additional 21 months terminating on December 31, 2022. Baker Tilly has offered us a price reduction, down from a blended rate of $190 per hour to $185 per hour. The proposed number of hours is 2,775 hours, and the not-to-exceed cost is $512,374. Please note that of this amount, $110,000 is being paid for by reallocation of approved funds within OTPS. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Aday?
Aday or Sandy, just can you remind everybody, especially the new trustees, about the headcount reduction and where we were? And is this pandemic-related freeze? I can't remember. Was this the 3% reduction, and what's the plan going forward? There's a lot of questions in there.
Right, so, so the, the headcount limit was established over two years ago. It may be three years ago now. I'd have to look back at my calendar. We were given a headcount limitation, and it predated our standing up the internal audit function. And therefore, you know, we're, I would argue, and we will actually present some, some comparison data that CEM Benchmarking has provided us recently about how we compare in terms of headcount versus the, the load of work we do. And we basically are short headcount in a number of departments. Internal audit is, you know, acknowledge the greatest percentage shortfall, and it is an important effort to keep, to keep rolling forward.
I just have a question. You don't, you don't have Corpus funding, is that right?
No, we, we do have Corpus funding, so we, and, and there's always been this balance of dollars spent and headcount in, spent. The off, you know, the, the the administration of controls on our cost is mostly related to headcount limitations.
I see.
Historically.
Right, okay. So you have to go to O and B for, to get a par. Is that the?
Larian, the budget actually is a pass-through through the Department of Education's budget, so it doesn't, as you know, go through the power process. But we have been, but Sandy has been prudently sort of following the city's guidelines on headcount for a while.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would add that we've also, when, when the city asked for a 3% budget cut, we did a 4% for fiscal 2021, so, trying to step up.
Are there any other questions? Okay, let's vote on calendar item number 21. Please indicate, all those in favor, please indicate your approval.
Favor.
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 Any? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is calendar item number 22. Authorization to enter into an agreement with skill director to provide competency assessment and development services to the Board of Education Retirement System. May I have a motion to consider? Shannon, and a second?
Michael.
Second from Michael, thank you. Lydia, Lydia Amin, Deputy Director of Learning and Development is here to tell us about this agreement. Lydia, please tell us about this.
Yeah, sure. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Lydia Amin. Again, I'm the Learning and Development Deputy Director. I'm part of the HR team. Before diving into the today's item, I would like to share with you the bigger picture, how this tool will help BURS employees and the agency, and for you to take an informed decision. So hoping technology will cooperate with me. I would like to share with you two or three slides. Okay. Let me know when you're able to see the PowerPoint presentation.
Uh, not yet. It's trying. It's still blank.
Must be a BURS laptop.
We can see your screen. We can see your screen.
Okay, thank you, Alex. Assessment flow for our.
I, I can't hear her.
Every other word is coming in and out.
Every other word is coming in and out. Lydia, your audio isn't coming in very well. It was, there was some delay there. Can you try speaking again, Lydia?
All right, I'm sorry. If you, the big. Skill direct.
Sorry, uh, I, I think that your audio is still coming in with a delay. Um, I, I wonder if you, if you try turning off your video, um, because that sometimes takes up bandwidth. I wonder if that might help.
I'll try.
I mean, you know, the camera, yes, that's it. Can you try speaking again, please?
What about now?
I think that's an improvement, yes.
Okay. So I apologize again. As I mentioned, I would like to take few minutes of your time to share with you the bigger picture. Why would like to inquire the skill director assessment tool? So the first step is to share with you our goals, our organization development goals. The first one is build a strong leadership bench. The second one is redefine the agency's vision, mission and goals. And the third and last one is to improve the BURS employee experience. How we would like to reach these goals is by developing a strategy. And as you can see on my slides, I rebuilt our strategy in four bit steps. The first step was to, um, build or set new goals for the agency. How we did that is we revamped the mission and vision of BURS, and we communicated the new vision and mission to staff through different town halls. The second step we took to reset our goals is to introduce the smart goals philosophy at the department level. Each director worked on developing smart goals, and each department translated the goals to their staff units. The second big step we took is to create the new, or the only, um, BURS competency framework that had incorporated core and leadership competencies. This is the first time we did that at BURS. A competency is the knowledge, skills and attribute required to reach the goals. We can also say that the goals is the what, and the competencies are the how, how we will reach the goals. The third step, which is the feedback and the coaching cycle, we put in place the first feedback cycle at BURS. We are deploying the feedback cycle next month. The first impacted group would be the leadership team, and we will reach the staff level by FYI '23. We decided to go this route and start with the leadership team because we, um, we think that equipend the leaders with the best tool to effectively give and receive feedback before reaching their staff. The last step, which is the L and D strategy, we conducted a need assessment within the agency, and we decided on our priorities and where we will spend our resources. That's where the, um, skill director competency assessment tool comes to help us. So the tool itself is a software. It's a, it's a web-based software. Can you still hear me?
Yes, thank you, Lydia.
Uh, this, so the skill director competency assessment tool is a software-based, um, tool that the employees of BURS will use to assess their own competencies. They will develop their own, uh, development or career plan, which after that, um, can track, they can track the plan. But more importantly, they will be able to benchmark their own assessment with their manager assessment within the feedback cycle sessions. And, uh, if there is any skill gaps defined during the cycles, they will be able to map them to learning and development solution still in the same, uh, tool. And the tool will, will create dashboard that they can track, the manager and the employee can track. And finally, with this enhanced focus on employee development, we are confident that this skill-building outcomes will increase employee engagement and satisfaction that will then translate onto our most coveted stakeholder, which are our members. Thank you, and please let me know if you have any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Lydia?
Hi, Lydia. This is Shannon. I do have a couple of questions. I think, um, my first is, um, I appreciate, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it. I am, um, the type of person who really wants to understand, like, how the, the pen, to make sure, I, I want to see how this is going to, um, not roll out, but I want to understand how this fits in terms of the current needs of the staff at BURS. Because based on the presentation, it sounds very high-level, and I'm wondering, um, how this is translating for the people who actually take the pens out of plastic, so to speak.
Um, if I'm correctly understanding your question, is how this plan will impact the staff members, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I, I'll explain. Um, so the first step we, I, I go back to my slide, maybe this is gonna be clear. So the first step here, uh, which we took is creating goals. Like, the first feedback that we got from the engagement survey that we had, uh, in 2019, where what was like, what are the expectations of staff? So all the steps we took are feedback that we got from the staff in the engagement survey. So by clarifying the expectations, having competencies that help them or guide them, increase, develop their skills, and finally have the opportunity to discuss it with their manager, it's, it's really, um, toward the staff members. And the solution for training is also for them. The only, uh, the only part where, uh, we decided to start with the leadership team is to better equip them than to support their staff. Again, our bench is a very young professional bench of leaders. And all what we are introducing here, all the concepts that we are introducing are new for the agency and new for them. So starting by the leaders, equipping the best tools they need, then for them to be able to translate that at the staff level. We also work in with the customer service, or I would say, man, a member communication team in developing their skills, their soft skills. Um, we also work in on institutional knowledge plan for the member communication team. Because again, as I said, within the L and D strategy, we discussed collectively what are our priorities in terms of learning and development? Because we also have limited human resources and we, financial resources. So we decided to work with the member communication team because they are our face map, face, um, team, face, member, member-facing team, sorry. So we are working in different fronts, the leadership team and the member communication team in terms of development. I hope I answered your question.
So you, you answered my question. I think I'm probably not, not clear. I think that the presentation ended up in and of itself is beautiful, and I think it communicates the goals. I think you guys have communicated that clearly. What I think I'm interested in understanding is, um, when I think about the work, um, related to what BURS does and provides for, um, the members. And when I think about the, each department, I'm just interested in understanding how what you have, not you, right? But how the, what the HR team has highlighted here directly connects with the person who may have started two or three years ago and can understand how this ultimately can relate to them advancing in the organization. Are they clear about how this software is going to be used to help them establish the trajectory? Because I just, I, I'm not, uh, yeah, I think that I'm not clear based on, and this is, you know, we've been remote now for a year. Uh, so that means that I haven't visited actual facilities in two years, right? Um, at a minimum, but I just, I think at that time, I, this presentation is beautiful. I'm just not sure, based on what is being presented, the actual concerns of your average BURS employee is communicated through this. I, and I don't really know how to say it any other way. I don't know if.
I understand. No, I can understand sharing your question, uh, Shannon, your question. So, yes, um, we have needs, uh, the, the staff has needs. That's, that's correct. And, you know, we didn't need assessment, an agency-wide need assessment to listen to all the directors. They came with all the needs, all the staff needs. But we collectively decided on priorities. That's one. Two, all what I presented here was presented to staff in the town halls, step by step. We worked on a goal setting and the smart goal philosophy. We presented that in a town hall. Hey, this is what we do it. You will hear from your director about your unit goals. We presented the actual unit goals in a town hall, department by department. So all staff, all BURS staff are aware of the expectations to their level.
I think I'm clear. I think I'm clear. And so maybe my, my comments are actually not, not for you, because you're, you're clearly communicating. I think maybe it's for Sandy or Daniel. I guess Sandy and Daniel, what I'm wondering is, based on what Lydia is saying, I think it would be helpful, um, and you know, to borrow language from Laren, I'm not suggesting that I'm interested in voting against this either. I think, though, what I would like to hear more about, um, moving forward is how, um, how this actually connects and meets the needs of the staff. Because what I hear, and this could just be, you know, the educational leadership developer professor in me, is I hear that the leadership team met, I hear that the leadership team is in discussion. I hear what the leadership team thinks the needs are. And I hear that the leadership team presents this information, um, to folks, so everyone is clear about what the expectations are. I do not hear how BURS staff is being asked to buy into this. I do not understand that this software is going to help them articulate what they feel like they need. I'm unsure about, I mean, I know you keep saying you did a survey. I don't know whether or not the questions that were asked on that survey afforded them the ability to say what they needed. Um, and I'm just, I, I guess that's the direction that I'm, I'm interested, I'm interested in, in knowing more about.
Can I add one thing, Shannon? We did, we did focus groups before taking the decision on the priorities for learning and development. We had two focus group within, with the BURS staff. We listened to them. We heard them, and the tool will help them assess their own needs. So we will be able to know what are their needs from the tool.
Yeah, that, this is Michael. Um, I'm gonna be, I just want to jump on what Shannon is saying. And actually, I'm gonna also say, I have no intention of voting against, you know, voting against this. Um, and I think it's a great idea for a tool. Honestly, when I listen to this conversation, it's giving me shivers because it reminds me of my former life in another large corporation. Um, and it's about a program that meets the needs of, um, of management, if you will. Helps, helps, helps flourish, you know, people working to help satisfy the over-goals, overall goals of the corporation. But to Shannon's point, um, do the people who are participating in this really understand, at least in my mind, what's happening to them and why, and why this could be a help to them? And I'm not saying you could have the answers right now, but it would be helpful, at least going on, to figure out a way to query them periodically. Query the people who are actually the ones that are using this tool and making sure they really feel it's helping them as a person, as a person, um, to move forward. Um, I see it as a tool to help the corporation, if you will, move forward. Um, but I don't see, I don't see the connection yet, um, to helping the individual who's being assessed and, and using the tool.
Michael, thank you for articulating that much better than me. That's exactly what I was trying to communicate, so thank you.
It, just to, to give, to give a little bit of historical perspective, the organization has gone through some pretty, pretty dramatic changes over the last three, four years. Uh, complete systems upgrades, which are continuing as we go on. Establishment of a call center where none was existing. Establishment of a member, uh, communications unit where none existed. A significant expansion of the counseling, um, effort. I think we more than crippled it, uh, and, um, restrictions in headcount and the pandemic. So it is, it is completely fair to say that, you know, uh, Lydia and her, uh, team in human resources are scrambling to help us deal with the systematic change that has occurred over the last three or four years and bridge those gaps that Michael and Shannon are identifying between, you know, what we are expecting of our relatively young staff, uh, who are seeing tremendous amount of change and the things that they need to adapt to that change. And I would, I would argue that this software is just a, a way for us to establish a recurring feedback loop with our people. And it's something we need to do, because you're right. It's not completely clear that staff are being helped by what we're trying to do. I know they're being affected because everyone is getting affected. But, you know, this is, this is a building process that Lydia and her team are in the process of build, developing.
Thank you, Sandy. I mean, I, and again, you know, I get it. And definitely, as a former DOE employee, though, right, who had a civil, civil service title, I am very familiar with 365. I've done that feedback cycle. I've done that. And I can tell you, and I was a city, what is it, a middle, I guess, level city manager, right? Like, so I, I understand, and I'm just telling you that none of that stuff was helpful for me. It never helped advance me in the organization. I hit ceilings. Um, even though I was praised and received great feedback on these things, it never directly connected to helping Shannon weight advance. And, and to Michael, Michael, you hit. And and to Michael, Michael, you hit the nail on the head. I, I'm just not sure that these very high-level lofty conversations. That are happening at the management level are trickling down and having the impact. That I think the HR team might hope. And so I, moving forward, I think it would be great to be much more intentional about. Directly connecting that because I think that this stuff made sense. I can tell you, this made sense in people that I worked with. That I worked for, it made sense in their head, and they very clearly saw how it related, right? But if they would have stopped a moment to ask those of us who were doing the quote-unquote like on-the-ground books. Like entering the transactions, taking the pins out of plastic. We might have been able to help them connect it a little better. And I'm just not sure that that's happening based on what was presented today. Not attacking, just giving feedback. So.
Right. And I, and I, and I just want to clarify in there because you said the right words. I'm not attacking either. I think what you're doing in terms of assessment and creating tools and so forth is a wonderful thing. I think what Shannon, I hear Shannon saying, which coincides with my own experience in another environment. Is that often there winds up being a disconnect. Disconnect being looking at the goals of the unit as whole. And by the way, you guys are doing a great job, and I have no doubt it's gonna be greater jobs as time goes by. But to as Shannon is highlighting, you know, it's sometimes what you miss the mark in is having this individual participant. Understanding how this tool could help them. And I just, I I think Sandy's comment about having this be an iterative look at how do you do things is a great. It's a great goal. And I would encourage it.
Um, thank you, Michael. Thank you, Shannon, for your feedback.
Oh, I'm sorry. This, yeah, this is Tom. I just have a a question. Sandy, when you were saying like there were. Things that came out of like the call center and those sorts of things, right? Now, I guess the question I have is, were those types of things like results of. Concerns raised by employees? And if so, does this tool seek to kind of promote and advance that type of. That type of communication within the organization?
I would argue, yes, Tom, it does. And where we need that kind of communication is especially in. Areas like the call center, which we basically stood up three years ago. It's still short-staffed and is struggling to deal with the inflow of calls they get. And and other departments, you know, where where. We have transitioned a large number of our staff to new processes and procedures. And it's a challenge for some of them. We're a very young organization, you know, our our leadership team. Is there any, yeah, but one, uh only one of our leadership team predates my arrival at Burr's. So they're all very young and moving up fast. And, uh, you know, this is, this is about helping them be leaders and helping staff execute for members. It's both.
I guess the, oh, I'm sorry. I guess, yeah, I guess the 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 asking and the way I'm asking it. You know. It it's like the idea for like, let's say, the call center itself, right? Like, like, was it like the leadership team, the directors that de- determine that need? Or was it just like, like the rank-and-file employee that's doing the work every day that said, hey, director? You know, we really need a call center. And, you know, that, I guess I'm asking it that way as sort of, you know, to say, does. What's what's being proposed kind of promote that?
I believe it does promote that, Tom. And yes, we are. We are organically growing some departments as a result of feedback coming from staff and leadership. As we manage through the changes we're making in the organization and the growth in activities around. Systems development, uh process and procedures, definitions and documentation. New ways of reaching members and also the, the, remember, we have the unenrolled. Challenge where we have a number of potential members who never joined and we're trying to reach them also. So that it's, it's been an organic development, uh which we're, uh, you know, we're trying to feed for internal staff. And it just raises training issues and challenges for people who are doing new things.
If I may add, add one thing um um to the discussion is that I I worked at Burr's for ten years. Point. But what we are offering now to Burr staff is development, which is a free currency. You can put in their pocket wherever they want to go. They want to stay at Burr, stay at Burr's, is opportunities for development. And it's free currency for them. They want to take it away. They want to take it with them. They can do it. This is, this is very important.
Lydia, that that sounds great, but I'm gonna give you a perfect example. Is the type of professional development you're offering like? How to move from a CM, CFM or whatever title here generally? Are you gonna be offering those types of professional developments, literally transferable currencies? Are these going to be like couture, couture, um custom-baked professional development for Burr's? Which is one unique city agency. So like, again, I think to Tom's point, to my point, to Michael's point. We applaud the effort. We think it's great. We just want to ensure that as you all are working hard to provide the best services for our members. That the folks who are doing that work are also provided with opportunities to advance and grow. And we just want to make sure that this work, that 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 work doesn't get lost in the weeds. Like high-level thinking.
Are there any other questions? Okay, uh, we will now vote on this item. All in favor of calendar item number twenty-two. Please indicate your approval. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you again, Lydia. Next item on the agenda is calendar item number twenty-three, noting receipt of the fiscal note report. May I have a motion to consider?
Michael.
Michael and a second. Natalie, thank you so much. Sherry, I see you. Can you please tell us about the fiscal note report?
Sure thing. So I pulled up the fiscal note report. Hopefully you guys can see it. If not, uh, please just let me know. Okay. Good, thank you. So there was five fiscal notes uh that was um sent out. Uh I guess the last time that was reported to this this board was September. So uh these fiscal notes were just uh from the end of January until basically when this this report was due to the board. So those five fiscal notes, one of them had to do with the early retirement incentive, and I'll go into more detail about each. Three of the five uh had to do with the accidental death benefit, specifically the COVID nineteen presumption. And then one had to do with the posting of board minutes. So going back to fiscal note number one, which is right here on top. Uh again, this was the same early retirement uh incentive bill that was. Uh forwarded to my office at the end of the last legislative session. We're just updating it for a new uh bill number for it, a L B D C number for it. So and updating with a current year, another years of data. So for Burr's, um for part A, and just to recap, if if you're not familiar, don't remember what part A and part B was. So part of this E R I program, part A was to give an additional month of pension service. For each year of service that an employee worked. Uh there is other uh criteria that need to be met for this, but generally speaking, that's the increase in the benefit formula. For part B, it would be not including the early retirement reduction factor. That sometimes applied if you retire early before your full eligibility. So for part A, it would increase on a per-person basis about eleven thousand six hundred per person on a contribution basis. And for part B, it would increase it uh by thirty thousand one hundred per person on a contribution basis. For the three death benefits, um this is, this was extending the presumptions. To qualify for an accidental death benefit. So COVID nineteen uh would have been uh considered. At one of the the eligibility requirements for an accidental death benefit for presumption purposes. This was also done on a per-person basis because we just don't have enough data um with cases, exposure lives. To this COVID nineteen to make a uh general uh increase in contribution cost. So it's done on a per-person basis. And on an annual basis and annual contributions, it would increase the contributions by twenty-one thousand six hundred per person. And you'll see that fiscal note number two appear as well as three and five are the same. Numbers and it was, the only difference was uh the eligibility date of the uh COVID death. So if you recall, last year when they passed the presumption bill for COVID nineteen. It was only for deaths uh up until December thirty-first, twenty twenty. So meanwhile, the governor has been signing these temporary extensions. Um and now these, these bills that are being put in front of the legislature are to extend it on a more permanent basis rather than a month-to-month basis. So the first one, I'll scroll back up, fiscal note number two was to extend it to uh December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And fiscal number three was to extend it to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. And the fiscal note number five on the bottom was to extend it to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, which is in line with the state's um budget year. So they would extend it until next year's uh budget deadline. So again, the costs are all the same for these three fiscal notes because we're doing on an annual basis per person. So for all three, it's twenty-one thousand six hundred increase in contributions per person. And then kind of lastly, which is the last fiscal note on the fiscal note report, but the last one that I'll speak of, is fiscal note number four. And this bill is to have a board meeting minutes posted on uh each of the retirement systems website. The bill itself doesn't actually include Burr's, but we think that was a mistake, so we did include it uh within our fiscal note. Uh that is attached to this report. You'll read it. But it is a diminished cost because uh it should not affect the contributions. In a fashion that is is too great. So I'll unshare here and I'll be happy to take any questions. So it's not, turn back over to the chair.
Uh Sherry, it's hilarious. Could you put the note back up again? Because I I wanted to ask you about the um, the first fiscal note. And the, just so I'm clear, so the, the cost you're enumerating, the cost you've estimated. Is the additional contribution the city will make that doesn't in any way take into account savings from the plan?
So, am I on mute?
No, you're not. We can hear you. Thank you.
I have my screen alarm, so I can't see if I'm on mute or not. So there are certain things that the fiscal note itself does not include. So I'm scrolling forward. Uh an appendix B after the summary that I include. This is actually the fiscal note that was produced. At the end of this fiscal note that I'm scrolling towards, this describes like the plan provisions, the costs. Right here, details it for each of the retirement system effects, the census data, the assumptions and methods. And at the end, there's a risk and certainty and uncertainty section and includes specifically the items that are not included. So, for example. When a.
Yeah, I see. I got it. I I got it. So the offsetting reduction in salary due to, that's none of that is measured. Okay. Got it.
And there's an additional thing that's not measured, uh which is higher up, I think, in the fiscal note. Is the point where, right here, if you see it. When members, assuming if they retire, if they elect the plan and and they retire. So there would be a reduction in headcount, assuming that there's no new retire, I'm sorry, no new hires to replace these retirees. Then the employer contribution will decrease because there's less um active members in the plan. And therefore it drives down the normal cost and employer contribution.
I see. Okay. And obviously, you 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 can't do an estimate of how many people will take up the early retirement, right? You didn't do that.
It does behave, um, it does, you know, go on behavior of obviously demographics of the population. We didn't want to opine on, you know, how many people we think we would, that would take it. I I think that the city or maybe even the unions themselves have a better understanding and a better grasp of. Who would, who might take it. And so this would aid them in that. We provided in the discussions with uh both the city side and the union side, uh ahead of, you know, this this bill being drafted. They were presented from my office, um statistics of uh members broken down by age and years of service. So they could get an idea and headcounts based on those that break down. So they could get an idea by looking at a specific cell to see, you know, how many people fit within that criteria that would be maybe eligible. And who might take it. There is right here, if you can see it, I'll enlarge it a little bit. This is a population on the left-hand side, this box right here. Here are the counts right here that are people who are um, who could be eligible for it, right? And the the count on the right, right here, are people that we su- we assume to elect. And that's not based on, you know, there's obviously a ton of different. You know, circumstances where whether a member takes it or not, you know, it could, it could have to do with health, it could do with, you know, spouses, a family situation, whatever. But on an actuarial basis, what we did was, we took their uh present value of benefits. Compared it to what it would be without the E R I and what it would be with the E R I. So on a pure actuarial basis, if the E R I benefit was larger than what they were currently being offered. Then they would fit in this bucket to assume to elect. Again, that's a human factor that we didn't.
Okay, thank, thank you, those very.
Sherry, just another quick question. So this is not, this is before the state legislature. This is not law yet, correct?
Correct. So this is still in bill form. Um it is not law. They, you know, I've heard that they want to get it within the state budget. They want to put it in the state budget, which obviously would be effective April first. So there is movement in that sense that I've heard. But I will say that, you know, we, maybe because we got the fiscal note out, but we haven't gotten a lot of calls. Usually my office gets a lot of uh phone calls from the state. If something is gonna be voted upon and it's on the agenda and it's, you know, moving. I will say that we haven't gotten a call from the state regarding this. But, you know, from other people, I have heard that they're trying to fit this in the state budget, which I guess they still have a little more time if that were the case.
Okay, and then going forward, assuming it does go forward, we're looking at fiscal twenty-two for impact on employer contribution, right? Or does that make sense?
So it depends on when they would want to make it effective. So if they made it effective this fiscal year. Depending on, you know, how, we have what, five months left in the fiscal year of roughly? You know, it depends on how close it would be, uh, you know, how soon they would get it if it's this fiscal year, if it's effective this fiscal year. Versus, you know, later on the fiscal year, when the employer contributions are already before the board. Then obviously we wouldn't be revising uh fiscal year, final fiscal year twenty-one contributions. And the the contributions, the final fiscal year contributions, which are the contributions that will be in front of this board, that will be presented to this board. And that they will vote on for the remainder of this fiscal year is going to be presented uh in two months to the board. Which, you know, uh, you know, board materials are due a little bit before that, and obviously we need to have our numbers finalized before that. So it really depends on uh how fast they move on this.
Are there any other questions for Sherry?
Yeah.
Thank you, Sherry.
Tom. Oh, this is Tom. I just want to ma- ma- I'm, I'm kind of a layman here, so I'm trying to decipher this as you go along. So I guess the question I would have is. So right now, you have, you don't know what the impact on the contribution will be? Am I hearing that correctly? Because you don't know like, like who's gonna be eligible or not?
So we, okay, so I I don't, I'm just gonna give a little background, um, so everybody's on the same page. And hopefully, somebody's gonna learn something. Hopefully, I'm not just saying this for the purpose of, you know, repeating. So fiscal note process, just so everybody is aware. A a bill that is being proposed in the state legislature in New York. Um, a, a bill that is being proposed in the state legislature in New York. Um, has to have a fiscal note attached to it if the bill has anything to do with pension cost. And the purpose of that is that when the legislators vote on this bill to make it law, uh, to pass it, and then the governor signs it to make it law. That they know the cost that they're voting for. They're not blindly just voting for, you know, some increase or decrease in pension benefit without knowing what kind of contribution. And budgetal effects it has. So when we get the bill, it's pricing out something that hasn't taken place yet, obviously, because they want to change it so that it is effective. So in some cases, we have past data to look at, you know, how much this would affect, like if it's on. Sometimes it's a general plan change where employees don't have a choice. It's just changing something, a, a plan provision. Sometimes it's adding um, an additional option for employees and members to elect. And on that basis, because there is an election process, we might not necessarily know how many people are going to take it. We know how many people are going to be eligible to take it, which is the whole universe, universe of people that's possibly allowed to take it. But within that universe, you know, there's different life decision, life choices that people have. You know, anything down to, like I said, perhaps their own health or. Their spouse's health or any other decision that they have, right? That might drive. Why they would want to take an option such as early retirement or not take an option. So because we don't have the specific data, what we do provide is a cost on a per person basis. So you know, like much of the fiscal notes that I went over tonight, uh, they, they share a cost on a per person basis. So based on how many people take it, you know, you simply multiply that headcount uh, on average. Times uh, this, these increase in contributions to get the total cost.
And what you're saying is historically, right? That you have, you've, you've had historic. Data that would suggest how many people would or wouldn't, but based on the way things are now, you can't make that assumption.
Correct. And you know, we're not here to really opine on how many people will take it, but we certainly are here to provide a cost for. You know, if a person takes it, this is the cost per person.
You, and I think, I think the reason why I'm asking the questions that way is because. You know, if the state legislature is going to um, you know, pass a bill, right? Um, you did say like you want to, they need to know the impacts, right? But the problem is sometimes if we, if they don't know. Um, like. You know, based on, like, if, if you use historical data to make that assumption, right? The fact that you can't do that now, they're almost shooting in the dark.
And you know, this is um. Like there is suggestions, there has been suggestions to kind of cap that, you know, if they're afraid that the cost is going to be too much, they could cap it to be, you know, the first. X number of people or the first, you know, Y dollar of cost until this liability is reached. Um, you know, we do provide, like I said, at the end, a, the universe of people to, that are eligible for it. Uh, so they can get an idea of, you know, if everybody were to elect it, how much it would cost. Um, you know, there's data probably available within the city, uh, perhaps OMB has it or some other agency in the, in the city has it. Um, that would, you know, have historical records of the past. Uh, early retirement incentives were offered, when those past programs were offered, how many people elected that? And perhaps that could be a gauge to other people.
Thank you. Thank you for uh, kind of helping me through that one. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, any other questions for Sherry? Great. Let's uh, let's vote on this uh, on this item. It's calendar item number twenty three. Please indicate your approval.
Um, it's, Mr. Chair, I think it's only a. Item for discussion. I don't think.
Okay. All right. Works for me. Uh, next, uh, the next agenda items are investment related items that belong in executive session. May I have a motion to enter executive session?
I'm moved. Natalie.
Mike.
Natalie, and a second from Michael. Thank you so much. Let's vote all in favor of entering into executive session. Please indicate your approval.
Approved.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Uh, we're now in executive session. Please turn the meeting off to the public and stop the recording. Okay. We are now back in public session. Alex, please report out the board's actions in executive session.
Uh, certainly during executive session, the board voted to approve calendar item twenty four, authorization of the controller to commit a portion of the private equity portfolio. And voted to table calendar item twenty five, authorization of the controller to commit a portion of the real assets portfolio.
Thank you, Alex. Uh, the final agenda item is calendar item number twenty six, authorization to the control of the city of New York to invest, sell and exchange the funds. Of the retirement system. May I have a motion to consider?
I'm moved.
Russ and a second from Michael?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, uh, this is the standard quarterly authorization to the controller's office. Are there any questions from the board? There being none, uh, we will now vote on this item. All in favor of calendar item number twenty six. Please indicate your approval.
Favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Okay. That concludes the agenda for this meeting. The next meeting of the Board of Education Retirement System Board of Trustees is scheduled for Thursday. March twenty fifth. Mark your calendars. Uh, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Michael.
Michael and a second from Russ. All in favor of adjourning the meeting? Please indicate your approval.
Approved.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you all. We are now adjourned. Good evening.